Good evening to you. This is our redo of a previous video that we had just started a little while ago. So rather than going into all the introductory details, I do want to encourage you to go to my personal YouTube page, Michael Miano, and click on the video wicked live study session, chapter five, the first part, because there'll be a, I'll basically edit them one that'll be this video, which is the main video. But I encourage you to go ahead, visit my YouTube page and of course, go through all the wicked sessions if you're catching up or watch these two sessions to catch the beginning introduction and what I'm going to move right in on. So when we got cut off a verse that I was bringing up with second Corinthians, chapter 11, verse three. And I imagine this will give me a little bit of an opportunity to back us up, to remind us where we were as I left off in the last session. So here in second Corinthians, chapter 11, we have the apostle Paul's second letter to the church of Corinth. And you know what? I'm going to back up and I'm going to start at verse one and I'm just going to read through to verse three. The apostle says, "I wish that you would bear with me in a little foolishness, but indeed you are bearing with me. For I am jealous for you with a godly jealousy, for I betrothed you to one husband, so that to Christ I might present you as a pure virgin. But I am afraid that as the serpent deceived Eve by his craftiness, your minds will be led astray from the simplicity and purity of devotion to Christ." So again, quite a bit that you want to underline in your Bible there. For me, the two things that stand out would be, your minds will be led astray from, well, let's just say that your minds will be led astray. And then devotion to Christ would be the two things that you'd want to underline there. Reason being is there are your two contrasts, the carnal mind, the mind that is led by false spirituality, the mind that is fostered by false religion is a mind that is being led astray. And that's what we've been talking about here is we've been talking about the goal of religion and spirituality, which is to keep one's mind captivated, true religion and true spirituality is that which keeps one's mind focused on Jesus Christ as the author and finisher of our faith. Here we see that devotion to Christ. That's the contrast to minds led astray is devotion to Christ. Your mind could be led astray in quite a few different ways, which is what I was explaining before, right before we got cut off. That again, there's that spirituality can be all sorts of things that can lead you astray. And false religion can be all sorts of things. However, we know the true spirituality that we're seeking and that God desires, which we read about there in John, chapter four, is when one's mind is focused on Jesus Christ as author and finisher of their salvation. And that is from whom all good things flow. That's why we read in Philippians, chapter four, "Set your mind on things that are above." Again, just another reiteration of setting your mind on Jesus Christ, because all of those things that are above flow from Jesus Christ. And we'll actually be talking a little bit about things from above here in a moment. So again, the, my point would be when it comes to salvation, it's about, about keeping our minds devoted to Christ. And this does place an interesting reality before us that when we're reading about natural things in scripture, it's not natural, physical, it's natural according to the mind of man, natural wisdom, which unfortunately is what the law of Moses led to men developing natural ways that they went about finding righteousness. And then their spiritual wisdom, which is man being provided with the true way from God to find righteousness and to have right standing with God. I had mentioned before, hopefully we didn't get cut off there on my conference video that I had done. If you go to my YouTube page, Michael Miano, I'm sorry, if you go to the YouTube page for the power of preterism network, there you can find conceptual salvation preached by me at our 2017, or it may have been the 2018. Sorry if I'm erroneous in that, one of those conferences, again, I'll be posting it in our weekly update as well as in the description box for this video on YouTube. But again, the video was entitled conceptual salvation. So moving right in on our chapter here, here we are on page sixty-three. Now that's the first page of this chapter and the first page I wanted to highlight, first thing I wanted to highlight in this chapter, actually before I do that, let's just take a moment to pray and praise God that we're back live and we're doing this segment. Mighty God, we do thank you, Lord, for you having sovereignty and providence, Lord. Your sovereignty, of course, you are in control of time and happenings. So we thank you that we were able to move right in on this video and that you've restored everything back to where it needed to be. And of course, Lord, for your providence, as I thank you for those that are here tonight, a part of this session, they are eager to learn, Lord. We are eager to fellowship with one another and to understand these things all the more. So we thank you for the knowledge that you've provided. We thank you for the increase in knowledge that you so command us to, as well as that you bless us with. And we ask that you give us your providence as we go through the rest of our evening with a good, clear and concise study, but also that you don't allow the storm to affect our, our study, Lord. Thank you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. So here on page one, I say, in regards to spirituality, I say, it is in our coming to know and study to show ourselves approved of what God has revealed that makes our focus authentic rather than based on our own systematic wickedness. And again, so that's, that's what our goal is here. It's to walk worthy of the positive side of second Corinthians, chapter 11, verse three, that we would seek, search, study and prove the things of God so much so that they would keep us devoted to Christ. And that's, that's authentic spirituality in contrast to minds that in so many different ways in our world and our society are led astray, whether it's, you know, just materialism, consumerism, selfishness, whatever it might be arrogance, pride, all these things are things that lead people to disregard the truth of Jesus Christ. And that would be what we're highlighting as carnality as well as false spirituality. I further on this page, on page seven, what is it? Page sixty-three, I go on to say, I did want to make mention of proverbs three, five, of course, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not upon your own understanding," which again, you see a contrast. I love contrasts. And you see the contrast there that there's one mind that is trusting in the Lord with all their, all their heart. Again, it's not talking about the organ pumping blood throughout your body, but rather the seat of emotions, the place where your being is. I remember Richard had shared that quite a bit with us a little bit last week and I definitely am in agreement. And so we see the heart there as this place, the seed of emotion, this, this, you know, where the entire being really is. Again, a lot of people are there. That's the substance of their life is their emotions. Matter of fact, just this morning I read a devotion where it talked about being a proactive person or a reactive person. And a proactive person that is somebody that has moved beyond being affected by their mere emotions. Again, emotion is beautiful when used correctly. It's sort of like the law of Moses. When it was used correctly, it was beautiful to show man their need for righteousness. Emotion can be beautiful in so many different ways. However, if we're led by our emotions, it can lead into many different erroneous thoughts, activities, et cetera. So, you know, again, it's important for us to see that. So not to be a reactive person where we're always led by our emotions. And so again, just I'm saying that because they, the reason why heart is used oftentimes in scripture is it's talking about that being the emotional place, being the identity of the person, you know? And again, you, you want to be so captivated in your heart with Jesus that your person is a display of Jesus, you know, that you're living in the image of God. And I'm just trying to find my point here. Again, I'm using a different book than my usual book. So I'm just trying to find some of the points I want to make sure I bring up. Sorry about that. Okay. So I want to go ahead and just read through this bottom paragraph here and then I'll kind of be able to figure out where I wanted to go with my point here. "If we are being intellectually honest as we learn and discern spirituality through the Bible, it will be blatantly clear to us that many of the details found within scripture are foreign to us in a 21st century generation. It is important to understand the context and worldview of those within the various cultural contexts to better understand the details and point of the biblical truths being revealed. We find confidence in what God has revealed, trust, rather than leaning on our own understanding when the details are studied out. Proper contextual study moves us away from demanding, and here we're talking about Genesis, a cosmological interpretation of the book of Genesis. And instead we learn about ancient Near Eastern temple texts and how Genesis applied in that manner. Studying things will move us away from toting traditions of Satan being a fallen angel rather than understanding the conceptual reality that was being conveyed, that was being conveyed by the Hebrew people, obviously in texts such as Isaiah, chapter 14, and Ezekiel, chapter 28, some texts that we'll be looking at next week. Consider the host of confusion that runs rampant in the Christian community due to clinging to confusion found within the slowly decaying view of futurism rather than consistently applying biblical hermeneutics." And I'll stop there and just leave a dot, dot, dot. So what I'm doing there is I'm giving you examples of, we're giving you examples of different ways that conceptual realities have been misunderstood and unfortunately have led to these other strange things, such as, you know, all the different hosts of cosmological interpretations of Genesis, the view of Satan and also futurism, again, which demands that, you know, the earth, the physical earth needs to be changed. Again, very similar to Gnosticism in the early couple centuries where this cannot be, according to my physical eyes, this is bad. The earth is bad and horrible and wicked and stained by sin. And therefore it all needs to be thrown in the wastebasket or we need to go somewhere else to experience righteousness, right in line with the Gnostic thought that was being disregarded and, you know, rebuked in the early centuries of the Christian church. So again, hopefully you see what I'm saying there about these conceptual realities. You know, the danger of false spirituality is highlighted for us in Ezekiel, chapter 14, verse four, where God basically says that their religion has become a stumbling block before them. And again, remember who he's talking about here in Ezekiel. He's talking about Israel, that their religion, they've put their religion in front of them so much so they've turned to idols of every sort, whether it was worshiping Bales, Ashthras, or it was leaning on their own understanding of the law of Moses. They've put idols so much in front of them that God began to answer them in keeping with their idolatry. You ever meet a person where it seems as though they've convinced themselves they're right? And they're, they're, you know, they're not going to remove themselves from it. That's what was the problem in the first century. That's why we read in Romans, one, that they desired to worship the idols. And therefore what did God do? He led them in further futility. He, okay, well, if you want to go in error, then you'll be encouraged to go in error. That's why we also read in Revelation, chapter 22, that after the consummation of the new covenant, we see, let the filthy be filthy, let the wicked stay wicked. God is not arguing with men. He's gripping men's hearts, electing men and bringing them to him. And that's the story we see through scripture. So hopefully we see the danger of false spirituality, false religion in that regard. Moving in on page sixty-four. I say this, if you go back down about three or four paragraphs. "When we begin to understand the biblical narrative through the lens of the Hebrews, we realize that they were given the covenant understanding of the one true God to conquer the myths of the idol worshippers. This goes all the way back to the ancient Near East. In making people his image, God set Israel at odds with the cultures around them." This is one of my favorite parts of the book, by the way. "Man was considered to be the lowest of all creation of the gods." Again, this is the ancient Near Eastern understanding. Man was the lowest on the totem pole. Continuing in the sentence here, "And therefore using man as the image of the one true God, demonstrated his, supposed to be a capital H there, a God's high regard for humanity. Instead of man being fit only to serve creation, man is seen as that which possesses and displays the truth of God." This is the conceptual reality that Israel would have understood and gained from their creation account in Genesis. So again, the Hebrews were called to, which is again, very strange that even today we hear that, you know, the word goyim, for example, could be referred to as cattle, that, you know, referring to man as animals. Whereas the Hebrew people, if they would have truly allowed their spirituality to lead them, they weren't supposed to look at the surrounding nations as less than them. They were supposed to look at the surrounding nations, just like we look at people outside of Christ, as people whom God wants to reach. God wants to affect. God wants to, wants them to be shaken from their slumber, so to speak. So Israel, rather than the way that their false spirituality and false religion led them, where they began to cast people out as less than animals, dogs, et cetera. We are called, now again, we see in scripture, yes, those that are outside the gates are called dogs, et cetera, spiritually, because they're identified in their sin. However, they were never to regard, Israel was never to regard man, any human being for that matter, as less than human, rather all have a reflection of the God that has created them. And Israel, unfortunately, we see the disaster of their, their religion, it leads them right in the hands of secular, even worldly philosophies where it's us versus them, rather than us blessing them. And Israel was called to do that. But again, we know the story that this was all revealed. Israel was given this law so that it would reveal to them that they could not do it on their own, but rather it would be through the new covenant, through Jesus Christ and his church. That's why Ephesians three tells us, "The fullness of the times was that the, the truth of God, the manifold wisdom of God would be made known through the church." And that was actually, if you read from Ephesians, chapter one, all the way to Ephesians, chapter three, that was the goal of that time. That's exactly what God was doing through the law of Moses. And that's exactly what he was fulfilling in the first century. So moving a bit further into the book here, onto page sixty-five, I explain to you this conceptual reality and I want to actually start on the bottom of sixty-four. And I say, "The spirituality outlined through the narrative of scripture and possessed by the Hebrews who were given the oracles of God continually points to conceptual realities, meaning understanding the mind as a place. Reality is best defined as the quality or state of being real, something that is neither derivative nor dependent, but exists necessarily. God gave the Hebrew people, people later to be known as Israel, the oracles of God, to provide a God-led worldview, narrative and reality. In contrast to the narrative that they would either make up or come to be led captive to due to surrounding cultures and idol worshippers. Conceptual is defined as relating to or based on mental concepts or ideas." So again, my point would be, and as I mentioned, many of the places in scripture, and we're going to look at some of them, one of my favorites would be when you read the Psalms. David's physical world was not something that he would have been sitting there praising God for. He was always in battle. His children were chasing after him, plotting his death. Again, it was not a very happy time for him. Job, another one. But Job, a little bit different picture of what wisdom is being shared there. Psalms would be my favorite because Psalms again is saying that your natural world is not the definition of what is blessed and not blessed. Again, and I know most of us on this call have dealt with the burden of having to share with somebody that yes, we believe we're living in the new heavens and the new earth. And then what is the immediate response? How can this, looking out at the physical planet, be the new heavens and the new earth? And if that is not the exact problem of man leaning on his own understanding or man doing what is right in his own eyes, in a sense, again, defining things by their physical circumstance, I don't know what would be qualified as that. So again, that is the problem. And that was the problem that was being contested was what captivates your mind? Are you, yeah, exactly, Richard, you know, that, that seems to be that some sentiment that people will share is that, you know, this doesn't look anything like what my carnal mind has built up. Well, exactly. God's not in competition with your, you know, your carnal mind, you know? So again, that shows, hopefully you're seeing the problem with our mind being led by other things and us conjuring up what we think the promises of God should look like. And again, that's what the Hebrew people were at war with. That's what Hebrew spirituality, not the Hebrew people, but the Hebrew spirituality, God's true spirituality is at, is at war with men's minds being deceived and led to their own thoughts and led to their own notions. So I'm moving a bit further here on page, bear with me, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty. On page sixty-five, I share with you a little bit about this picture here of the Psalms. Reading from Psalm, chapter three, verses one through eight, we read this Psalm of David. "O Lord, how my adversaries have increased. Many are rising up against me. Many are saying of my soul, 'There is no deliverance for him in God.' But you, O Lord, are a shield about me, my glory in the one who lifts my head. I was crying to the Lord with my voice, and he answered me from his holy mountain. I lay down and slept. I awoke, for the Lord sustains me. I will not be afraid of ten thousand people who have set themselves against me round about. Arise, O Lord, save me, my God, for you have smitten all my enemies on the cheek. You have shattered the teeth of the wicked. Salvation belongs to the Lord. Your blessings be upon your people." And again, what I share with you here in the book is if you wanted to read the historical period in which David had said that Psalm, it was found in second Samuel, chapters thirteen through fifteen. Interestingly enough, not a very pretty chapter, nor very pretty three chapters. And you can sense that from the Psalm. Notice this, David is not ignoring his reality. He's not saying, you know, things are perfect. Everything is peachy and I'm just, you know, floating with God. No. He sees that there's problem in his midst. And again, the interesting thing about this Psalm is he's reciting this, hopefully you caught this, before God has done anything. It's as if David is identifying the reality of the situation. This is bad, right? This is, this is bad, just to kind of summarize his thoughts there. But then he says, "But my God is bigger than this bad." You see, in very simplistic thoughts there. And then he, he still acknowledges it. But then he acknowledges the times that the Lord has worked in his favor before. You know, he says right there at the end, "You have smitten all of my enemies." Well, no, that wouldn't make any sense because he says that his enemies have increased in the first portion that we just read in verse one. So what he's saying is, God, my, my situation is bad. My enemies are all around about me. But my God is bigger than the enemies that are round about me. God has shown himself faithful in the enemies that were round about me before. You see, he's just, again, and hopefully we all do that in our natural or in our spiritual lives, is we find ourselves in natural circumstances that are not all that great. And we, we praise God because we know he's bigger than the circumstance. And then we remind ourselves of the times that God has shown himself faithful. And again, if you don't have those times in your natural life, bring yourself to scripture and see where God has shown himself again and again and again. So that, that would be one of my favorite examples. Matter of fact, this past, well, last Sunday, not this past Sunday, but the Sunday prior, I preached for, no, actually I'm, my Sundays are getting bunched up here. On Father's Day, on Father's Day here at the Blue Point Bible Church, I preached about the Father's Day wisdom and I use the books of wisdom as my, my topic. If you were to visit buzzsprout backslash or buzzsprout.com backslash one, one, six, three, zero. Or if you just simply go to Google and put in Blue Point Bible Church podcast, you'll be able to gain access to our podcast. There's other ways. Go to bluepointbiblechurch.org, click at the top where it says sermons and you'll be brought also to our, our sermon podcast. And what I've been doing there for the Sundays that we're not able to film our actual services is I've been offering recording reviews of the sermon. So I share there with you a review of my Father's Day sermon in regards to wisdom, exactly what I'm talking about tonight in regards to how that wisdom in the books of wisdom is placed there to help one get outside of their own thinking, stinking thinking, if you will, and instead into the mind of God. And again, so a lot of what I'm reading here today was very beneficial and then reminded me of that sermon. So I want to go ahead and encourage you to do that. Here, if you move into the next page, I'm doing my best not to write in this book that is not mine. So if you're wondering why I'm having a hard time film flipping through the pages here, just trying to make sure I don't write in the books. So if you go to page sixty-six, I believe, here I share a little bit about Job. Yes, the next page, if you were to flip over to the next page, I share here about Job and I say, I said, "Let's consider other books of wisdom such as the books of Job, proverbs and the Song of Psalms, and which all point us to a sincere spirituality. The book of Job, which is often regarded as an ancient book, the oldest writing in scripture, points to the conceptual reality that man was not created to dwell in the dust. In the ancient world, dust was regarded as something meaningless and worthless. I have developed this in a blog I wrote on my blog site, Miano Gone Wild, which I'll just share with you, the title, Man of Dust, Genesis and Ancient Near Eastern Origins. And what I'll do is I'll just kind of back that up and explain it to you here for a moment. So in the ancient world, dust, again, it was good for nothing. It was in the way. It was a pain. It was, you know, imagine if your floors were not made of the things that your floors are made of in the home you're living in right now. Dust becomes pest. I imagine for those of us living in the 21st century, we might even be able to say dusk, dust is a pest. But again, much more so in the ancient world. So when things were considered dust, they were considered good for nothing. The ancient Near Eastern religions believe that man in his state without serving the gods was good for nothing. Whereas God in calling Adam and in placing his blessing upon this lineage through Adam and saying they would be the image of God to the world redeemed humanity in a very, you know, what's the word I'm looking for here? In a very general way, I'm speaking about humanity here. Again, we know the story of the elect that is made known through Adam's lineage. But the fact that he called Adam in the first place, he could have chosen a, a horse. He could have chosen, you know, the cow, you know, there were so many other things that he could have chosen. I guess this depends on how much better or smarter you feel than an animal. But there's so many other things, could have chose the lion of the jungle, so to speak, you know, and, and made that the, the crown of his creation. But the one true God chose humans. There's a beauty in that that would have been completely foreign to the ancient world. And you know, there's beauty in that for us. So Job is actually a story of that. Because again, the way that the ancients would have understood life was if something bad happened to you, it's because the gods hated you. If your reality was bad, the gods hated you. Matter of fact, the gods hate you all the time. So what you need to be doing is offering sacrifice after sacrifice after sacrifice to appease, to appease them. And that was the way they viewed, imagine your life like that, where our gods above us, just, you know, the, the way that they look at us would be, we have to constantly be appeasing them. You know, you're worthless other than serving the gods. And then matter, picture this, the rain, the weather, the storm that we're experiencing right now would all be contingent upon what you were doing to serve the gods. What a reality. But in contrast, what we're seeing is in scripture, such a gracious reality that God is basically saying, no, well, the one true God reveals himself as though I'm sovereign and I've created you. And I actually believe you're worthy to be crowned as my, my highest creation that upon I will, I will put my image. And again, I don't believe that he put his image upon all humanity. I believe that he put his image upon those that were in Adam. And that was the story that we begin with Adam. And they were called to reflect his image, which unfortunately we know natural Israel could not do because these things were revealed that without the righteousness of Jesus Christ, man cannot reflect God to this world. Because all we end up doing is reflecting our own thoughts, our own carnality and dare I say, false religion and false spirituality. So Job again is showing that no, the things that are happening in Job's world are not happening because God is mad at Job and that God wants him to repent and offer sacrifice. No. God wants man to recognize that he's in this world under God's sovereignty and providence. And that as Job rightly said, right from the very beginning, the Lord gives and the Lord takes away. And the story of Job is based upon that very point, that no matter what his wife said, no matter what his friends said, Job stayed true to knowing, no, I, you know, he was mad at God. Again, if you're familiar with the story of Job, I love it because it's full of emotion. But he was, you know, he had his moments. Again, if I, I think that if we're sitting here and we're saying that, well, true spirituality is not that all things are hunky dory. I'm sure we've all found us, found ourselves in moments where we were frustrated at the things of God and frustrated at God for how our current circumstance looked. However, it did not deter us or cause us to, you know, and I'll say this, I'll speak for myself. I know I found myself at times where I am saying, you know, I allow that stinking thinking to pop up. And it's like, did this happen to me because I did this? And I have to hear God whisper in my ear, "I am sovereign. I give and I take away." You know, because how easy is it to remove our focus on the things of God and on our Christ righteousness? When we find ourselves doing that and all of a sudden, we become so focused on ourselves, very similar to the Pharisees in the first century. That's exactly what they were doing. They allowed their disastrous time not to lead them to focus on the things of God and to be more loving and to be more, you know, desirous of the truth of God. What did they do? They focused in on themselves. They created law after law after law. So again, we need to be, we need to be mindful. Amen. That, that proverb, you know, about trusting in the Lord and not leaning on our own understanding, as Richard rightly noted, there is, it doesn't only apply to the story of Job or apply to the first century or apply to the days of Solomon. It applies to all of us. And it's a very key reality for all of us. Book of Proverbs, I believe the proverb that I want to just make mention of here, again, the book of proverbs is beautiful. I don't know anybody on the planet for that matter, that doesn't know that the book of proverbs has great insight in it. But what we read in proverbs, chapter 23, again, even a common sentiment is verse seven, "As a man thinks within himself, so he is." And again, that's so important because if we're thinking of ourselves, picture this, if we're thinking of ourselves as lower than all humanity and God would never work through us. uh, we would reject Christ. You see that thought right there would lead you to reject Christ. That's what led the Gnostics to reject Christ. Uh, if we're thinking that, you know, Jesus has to come in a certain way and, and conquer the nations and not be loving and humble, but rather, uh, keep us on his side, you know, like extreme nationalism. It's safe to say we're going to miss how the, the true Messiah would reveal himself, which is exactly what was done in the first century. So Proverbs again is reminding you that your reality will be displayed by what you think about. And what you think about yourself, what you think about this world, what you think about God, what you think about the way God has revealed himself, all of that has everything to do with what you think about yourself. And for example, if you think too high of yourself, you're going to miss it. You're going to do what is right in your own eyes. If you think too low of yourself, you're going to miss it. So again, you, we have to be thinking rightly about all things. Um, and then Ecclesiastes, uh, will just say this, I, I don't know that I've spent too much time on Ecclesiastes. Again, it's a, uh, added on to two proverbs, you know, a lot more thought there, uh, and Ecclesiastes as well. I share quite a bit about that in that sermon I had mentioned sermon review I mentioned to you a moment ago. One thing I think about Joe, when I read that about a man, uh, as a man thinks within himself, so he is. It's safe to say that me, each of you on this call, those of you that are viewing this session, if it wasn't for God doing a act of his, of his own to change our thinking, we would still be thinking the way that we were formerly thinking depraved, carnal. It's God alone that changes our minds. That's why in John chapter three, when Nicodemus came to Jesus Christ and he asked him, what must be done? He told him, you must be born from above. In other words, the work that needs to be done needs to be given to you from above. And if you remember when I began our session, I said, all the things that are from above, remember Philippians four eight says, set your mind on things that are above. All those things come from Jesus Christ. And that's why when Jesus is saying, you must be born from above, is you must be born from me. Your mind must be renewed by a work of God. It's not, you must climb to heaven. You know, that was the problem. Uh, that was a, we read about that. What is it? Genesis chapter five, uh, when men go about an effort of their own to make it to heaven, the tower of Babel. And we seen what happened with that plan. Uh, so again, uh, hopefully you're seeing that that's what, uh, Proverbs is really trying to do is lead us in on what it means to be a people that are thinking from above. And, uh, just to kind of move us a bit further, I know I got interrupted tonight with our storm. So I want to kind of summarize some of my thoughts here. I'm dropping my notes all over the place. So I'm moving a bit further. Uh, onto if you flip the page with me. One of the things I wanted to make known was, uh, now we talk about dust. Uh, man can exist in the dust. You see, I think that's where, uh, I'm not sure what page I'm on here, but I'm going to kind of summarize some of my thoughts. Um, and I, I know I mentioned this in the book, so I just encourage you to go ahead and review that. Um, man can exist in the dust. If you remember, God fashioned Adam from the dust, right? But then we know that it doesn't say that Adam became a living soul until God gives him the breath of life. Man can exist in dust, dust and have an existence in the dust. Unfortunately, that's what we see around us. That would be people that are living in carnality. So when man's in the dust, uh, what ends up happening? He has to be provided, as I was rightly just telling you from John chapter three, uh, he has to be given the breath of life. The breath of life comes from God, and that's what we're reading about in Genesis where we read that God takes man from his carnal state and breathes life into him and he becomes a living soul. A man could be a soul without being a living soul. You could be a being, again, the soul is simply a depiction of being. You could be a being without being a being that is alive. And I explained in this chapter, I believe the Greeks, they best showed the contrast where they have the word bios and then they have the word Zoe. Bios is mere existence. Zoe would be life. And, uh, that's why when we read about eternal life, it's Aionios Zoe, not Aionios bios, which again would have been simply eternal existence, which sounds horrible and is probably more ten amount to eternal condemnation than, uh, we might think. Uh, so, um, again, we, we see this state of, uh, Aionios Zoe eternal life, truly living your life. And that's why, uh, we read when Jesus says in John 1010, the thief comes to steal, kill and destroy. I come that you might have abundant life. You might have Aionios Zoe. And, uh, so man can exist in the carnality, but, uh, that's not the reality that God has for man. That's not what, uh, God would want. So as you move through the chapter, I actually gave an example, I, on, uh, right before the, the outline. So that would be on page. Just go to the page before the outline. It's frustrating when you know you wrote something down and you can't find it. So, uh, all right. So right before the outline regarding spirituality in the Hebrewic Adam, on that page, I actually share with you an example. I share with you this example about, uh, the days of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Applied, uh, you know, uh, this conceptual reality in his day. He saw that there were people in his day that were defiant against the, the civil rights movement, uh, in many different ways. And, and what he did was he recognized that if they allowed the thoughts that were being fostered due to those people, whether it was, uh, acts of violence, which was one of the ways that people were choosing to react to the thoughts of, uh, you know, the problems of the civil rights movement, uh, that in other words, uh, we see, uh, Malcolm X and some that had by all means or by any means attitude, uh, that had come out of that. So they were more prone to violence and rioting, et cetera. Whereas, uh, then you had some that would be led into a state of complacency and they would just say, you know, uh, things are going to be how they're going to be, and they wouldn't strive for, uh, better conditions. And, uh, then you had those that were so defeated and could do nothing but cry. And then you had, you know, on, on the other side, you had people that were, uh, racism was increasing, uh, due to the way people chose to look at the situation. So my point is the way that Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Chose to, uh, highlight that was to call these people giants. And I want to share with you the quote that I share on this page. He says, there are those who look upon this world and all of its revolutionary turmoil and predict that the end is near at hand. But there is one message which Christian movement must continue to make clear. And that is that this is still my father's world and that God is a revolutionary God and he can overcome the forces of evil and destruction in our midst. So you see what he was doing there was he was using the spirituality that the Hebrew people had. And when they were going into the land, remember how defeated they felt. Some were saying, we look like grasshoppers in their sight. You know, uh, think about the wilderness period as they followed Moses. At every turn, they complained and grumbled about their situation. What Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Knew in his generation needed to be done was he needed to encourage the minds of people so that they would actually press forward. He understood the power of the mind. And it's imperative that we in Christianity understand the power of the mind as well. Uh, if I had an exhortation for us tonight, and I do have a little bit more to share, but I'm going to go ahead and summarize this and maybe share some of this at the conclusion or, uh, next week. But my exhortation for us tonight, and then I'll bring everybody back on and maybe share some of your own thoughts would be this last paragraph here. And the father has, in other words, the father has made known the truth. He has provided an authentic spirituality that will overcome evil and destruction in our midst. It just takes a bit of seeking, searching and studying on our, on our part. Oh, and let us not forget enough intellectual honesty to examine our presuppositions and where they come from, and especially to ask questions. And I'll go ahead and unmute everybody tonight. If you want to go ahead and join in on the discussion.
Okay. Oh, the, um, he has provided an authentic spirituality that will overcome evil and destruction in our midst. Well, that's our job as far as to heal the nations. Um, through love and being identified with Christ, the true spirituality. You know, being identified in Christ, being that example where people could look towards us to see a God within us. Um, and the Jesus in which we serve, uh, that identifies the God in which we serve. Hmm, no, uh, by our fruits and things of this nature. And, and as you have here, seeking, searching and study. You know, uh, see, yeah, seeking, searching and studying. You didn't put the, uh, the approved part.
Oh, I didn't put it.
Yeah, but, uh, yes, but anyway, um, is definitely necessary, you know, because we have to be able to give an answer, you know, to many of the questions. And I have here, you know, um, perspective, uh, um, uh, produces our perception. You know, if we have a wrong perspective, our perception is going to be, you know, uh, obscured.
That's right.
You know? And what else did I write? I wrote also, uh, relationships versus imagination, revelation versus imagination. To whereas, um, people with the false, um, spirituality, you know, spiritual, spirituality, other than, uh, following or being identified with Christ, you know, they, you know, they don't have the revelation. So all they have left is their imagination. And what the imagination leads to is destruction, you know, sin and, you know, uh, um, what do you call it? A reasoning to where you justify your behaviors, which is contrary to God's, you know, uh, will.
Yeah, understood. Amen.
Yeah.
Well said. I'm glad to see that some of this makes sense. That, that's encouraging. Um, you know, I, I get excited when I read through the book because, you know, even today it got me thinking, there were plenty of times even throughout my day where I, you know, I was able to remind myself very simply of, uh, hey, get your mind right. You know, you know, you're not, you're not thinking in the right direction or there's something. So for me, it was a good, you know, it's good to see the explanation, but in the, the application is, uh, is very beneficial as well. So I'm hoping that we're all seeing that reality in our lives.
Can I share a scenario I got from Johnny's table talk? I forgot who the speaker was, but he has some great, uh, things to say. He said, there was an atheist that was contradicting Christianity and Christians, their beliefs. And, uh, he just kept criticizing and attacking Christians. So there was just like, uh, man that used to be a drunk with tatted clothes. He, he approached the stage and started peeling an orange. And the man said, uh, you're disturbing me. And the man just kept peeling the orange. And when he finished peeling the orange, he took a piece and put it in his mouth. And he had asked the, the atheist and he said, um, the orange that I just put in my mouth, is it sweet or is it bitter? The atheist said, well, there's no way for me to know because I have not tasted. And the man said, exactly. Because scripture says taste and see the goodness of the Lord. So I thought that was an excellent, you know, scenario to, uh, get atheists thinking about tasting. You know, the goodness of the Lord, you know, because once you taste, there's no going back.
That's a good, uh, good, good reality there. And I'll tell you, because what the, uh, the Hebrews used to do, uh, actually I read this the other day, was they used to take honey and they would put it on the, the tip of the tongue of all their, uh, their students. Uh, right. Or they would read the Torah. Uh, that way anytime they would ever open up the Torah, they would, their mind would go right to the taste of the honey. And again, you, you teach, you know, like it says in Proverbs, train up a child in the way he shall go, he will never depart there. Or when he's older, he will not, not depart from it. Uh, there's a reason I make emphasis to that. Another teaching for another, another time. Uh, however, uh, again, there is that, that point of using that that point thereof, you know, we're helping people understand, uh, the reality of how sweet the word of God is. So good example. Um, anything else, uh, anybody, Richard, you have anything you want to share? Uh, Vicky, Kathy, I know you're here with us as well.
Yeah, please. Um, uh, thank you. Pastor Michael, this has been a wonderful lesson. And thank you, Edward, for what you shared. That was very powerful.
Yeah, I continue to just be captivated by Christ and
Amen.
You know, true spirituality is not, I'm learning that it's not my works or my experiences or my own knowledge or my emotions, but, but just simply trusting in the Lord. And, and then the religion that kind of holds that all together is just to do the word. And so what Edward said about him, just embracing all that we are in Christ is just so important. And I, I think that's as authentic of a faith that I can achieve at, at this point. Like you said, it's all a act of God. It's, it's all a miracle. I don't know what happened to me. I, it wasn't anything within me. The, I love what you said about how God forms Adam from the dust. And Adam moves from dust, which is basically like you said, useless. I mean, you can't even, if it was clay, it could at least pack it together, right? You can't even do that with dust, but Adam goes from dust to the pinnacle of creation in, in perfect harmony with his creator. Yeah. And then just a couple of things from the book that really, excuse me?
Sorry to cut you off, Richard. I, I did want to say I really appreciate that analogy. I don't know why. I've always looked for something to compare dust to. And again, clay would be a very, very ancient Near Eastern concept, uh, something they would have used. So, uh, I appreciate you giving me that example because clay, like you said, uh, something that useful, something you can make things out of, something that you can use for healing. Dust is good for nothing. So thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry to get you off.
Yeah. Well, from the book, the parts that uh, caught my attention and I'm going to paraphrase and jump around a little bit, pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Uh, where you wrote the, for the Hebrews, the world was the canvas of God's constant activity. Everything in the world, everything happening in the world led them to an understanding of what God is doing. And so in, in covenant with Yahweh, they lived life with purpose and clarity and conviction. And, and they had a beautiful, worthwhile and wholesome existence. And, and we do too in Christ. We just need to embrace it. Grace, all that we have, all that he's done is so beautiful. But thank you again, Pastor Michaels. Really powerful lesson.
Oh, that's great. I'm glad that you were encouraged by that.
I would like to comment like what, what Richard brought up and that you have spoke of as far as the dust. And then God's, uh, breathing into him and turning him into, rather making him a living soul. Uh, originally in the beginning, you, you spoke of spirituality from creature of God to a child of God. You know, so, uh, the dust be, and then becoming a child. You know, because we all started off as dust, you know, to, uh, create, create, uh, the creation. You know, we all was basically dust until God, you know, gave us that spirit, that spark. You know, the eyes to see, ears to hear, that hunger, you know, and thirst for him that he provided the living water because we knocked. And, and he answered, you know, so, uh, yes, you know, I thought that was an excellent analogy in every God. You know, yes.
I could definitely appreciate the, the sentiment, Edward. Now I'll say this, I can appreciate the sentiment of seeing where we might identify. I'm going to say it a bit different than you. Okay? Uh, we might identify ourselves as prior to our time with Christ, our relationship with Christ as dust. And rightly so, because again, from our standpoint, it looks as though we were doing nothing but merely existing. However, I do want to bring into, you know, election into discussion. Uh, you know, I, I am a one that believes in election. So I do believe that before the foundation of the world, uh, the Lord had formed us and created. Now, again, what, what Edward shared uh, in a normal Christian assembly, I don't think that that's remiss. I, I think that that can be an acceptable general understanding. Uh, I would disagree. Uh, but you know, because again, of, because of my, my more Calvinistic leanings, uh, I would say that Israel was dust because again, Israel was identified as a Gentile that was at one time not with God and was called to be with God. Whereas us, and I, I'm sure you're, you're realizing that Edward now, right? That we were never dust. We've always been.
Scripture, 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 but you had just given, that's true.
So, so again, where I can agree with, well, let's say it like this. Our lives according to before that time where that spark happened. Our lives according to before that time where that spark happened, appeared as mere dust. Uh, it was mere, it was mere existence. We appeared as dust. We were good for nothing. But thanks be to God that he called us from again, as we read in scripture, from our depraved minds, uh, into his glory, uh, because of his grace, his true grace that we were highlighting before.
Yes. And as Jacob held the foot of his brother Esau, right? And then the mother was told by God that the older will serve the younger. This is what TD Jakes said. He said with us, our old flesh before we became, before we receive salvation, the younger, the older us will serve the younger new us. The new salvation, the new people that we are of salvation. So our flesh is to serve our spiritual.
That's right. Cause the spiritual is what came first, right? Again, uh, again, we, we're getting into.
I know, because that's not scripture, because scripture it states that from the foundation of the earth, from the world.
Right, right. Again, and I, I imagine, I'll say this about TD Jake, some great teachings. Uh, absolutely. I'm a, I'm a emotions fan. Uh, however, um, I would probably put him in the box of Arminian. I'm pretty sure he's Pentecostal, uh, and would probably have an Arminian leaning. Again, I work with many in Christianity that are Arminian and that are outright Arminian in their ideologies. Uh, so I don't discount that from a Christian thought. It would be that I view and I understand the details of scripture, uh, to be a little bit different in that regard when it comes to how God has called us and what part we play in, uh, what God has done.
And I was able to catch that as I said it, um, from what you had just described, bringing up scripture before the foundation of the world. You know, because what, what did he have a, a future and say that fits that paradigm? But he had said that, um, God, he loved us so much. He had us on his mind to the point he brought us into fruition and made us a reality. You know, before the foundations of the world, you know, he made us a reality. You know, we were, we were on his mind. We were on his mind to that point. He loved us that much, you know?
Well, amen to that. Absolutely. That's right. You know, I would, I would just carry that a little bit further and say you were on his mind so much so that he, he, uh, created, uh, called you to himself. And he had that intent and purpose with your life. Uh, unfortunately, we see not with everybody's life, unfortunately, yet fortunately, because it's God's plan. Uh, but, uh, you know, again, we see that not being the case with everybody. So.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, what I actually get into starting on page seventy one in regards to that outline. And what I'll ask actually, if you guys don't mind, is that we do spend more time next week. Uh, being that we got cut off, let's, uh, spend more time in this portion, pretty much starting from page seventy one. But again, we'll cover everything again in chapter five. And, uh, we'll, we'll start on page seventy one in my lesson and I'll bring us a bit further, uh, in some of the things that I wanted to share. That's good with everybody?
Yes. And you just taught me something as far as, um, when I listen to these pastors, right? I don't play to take through. I don't really think it through and come up and come up with scripture to substantiate what they're saying, because I talk a lot about substantiating things with scripture. But yet I, I fail to do that myself, you know, in certain areas, which is, you know, now I just have to be conscious of that, you know, substantiate everything with scripture.
Well, I appreciate you knowing that. So again, we can, we're called to always increase in our knowledge, right? Always called to increase in knowledge. So that's good that you're noticing that. And what we'll pray is that you have the wisdom, that would be wisdom, right? Is application of the knowledge that you've attained. So, uh, we'll be providing, God, God's word tells us that he, to those who ask for wisdom, he applies it liberally. So, uh, we'll ask for the wisdom and all that, you know, in all of our regards. Because to think that we've got, uh, we've completed the work of needing to prove all things in our lives. Uh, you know, and Edward, I, I want to appreciate that you, you said this before our session tonight, and you also highlighted it now at the end, that, uh, evaluating presuppositions and challenging ourselves in that regard goes beyond mere searching of the Bible and seeking and studying and proving the Bible. It also has to do with our regular lives. You know, how are we, uh, extra, are we possessing and increasing in self-control? Is there something in our way? Are we maybe convincing ourselves we have self-control, but we don't? Uh, you know, there's so many different ways that we need to, uh, and then again, I can bring that on to all of those attributes that are mentioned there in second Peter, chapter one. Uh, let's highlight another one. Uh, am I being loving? Am I living with love? Am I possibly convincing myself that I'm living with love, but there's things that are getting in the way? Uh, you know, um, these, that's a part of, uh, when it says examine yourself, matter of fact, by and large, the goal was for man to examine himself in regards to his reconciling himself with his neighbors. So, uh, you know, that's one of the biggest features of, uh, examining yourself. So again, I challenge all of us to, uh, go about that work of, uh, examining our presuppositions, not only what we think about Satan in the end times and all these other, uh, fun to talk about God topics. But what about our presuppositions that are in effect every day? Uh, you know, in our, our everyday motions, our things that we're doing, uh, the people, the way we're talking to people, the way we're seeing people. Uh, you know, again, I want to encourage all of us to, uh, just continue that work. And Edward, I want to applaud you and thank you for being a great example in that regard. Well.
You just said, when we see Israel, when we see people, um, that are, are, that are outside of God, we are to see them as people that to be drawn into the kingdom instead of see them like some of the Israelites have seen people as dogs or whatever, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Again, you know, uh, one of the things that stands out to me in that regard would be early on in Deuteronomy, God told Israel, and you've heard me mention this many times, that the reason why it says that when they ask you, why were we given these laws and statutes? In Deuteronomy, chapter four, it says, uh, to tell your children this, uh, that we were given, uh, these laws and statutes to basically be an example. I'm going to paraphrase it a little bit here, to be an example to the nations around you. Uh, so that those nations, not only that those nations would look to you and say, wow, look at those people that are worshiping God. No. Uh, that they would look to you, they would see God and that they would desire him, that they would want to come in as well. So obviously, uh, their mindset was supposed to be, we need to live in a way that blesses the people around us. What we know unfortunately happened due to them leaning on their own understanding, doing what is right in their own eyes. They began to look at the nations around them as less than us. Look at us. You know, look at me all clean and proper because I've leaned on my own understanding. And then that led them to disregard other people rather than having a high regard for other people. Again, when we consider them, that's why it tells us to remember the grace that has been poured upon us. Because when we realize that God had every right and, you know, reason to disregard us, but what did he do? He had a high regard for us. He realized that if you put a man, what's that famous phrase? If you treat a man, uh, the way that he, he attained or appears to be, he'll never change. But if you treat a man as he could, he'll try to attain to it. Again, I probably butchered it a bit, but hopefully you caught the sentiment.
Yes, yes.
Richard, you had something you want to share there?
Yeah, just one last thing real quick. May I share a verse?
Please.
Uh, from Romans eight, verse fourteen. For all who are led by the spirit of God are sons of God. Where you did not receive the spirit of slavery to fall back into fear, but you have received the spirit of adoption as sons by whom we cry, oh, the Father. The Spirit himself bears witness with our spirit that we are children of God. And if children, then heirs, heirs of God and fellow heirs with Christ.
Amen. Amen. That's right. You know, if I may end our session tonight, uh, just taking notice of that beautiful verse and highlighting the fact that it said, receive. Receive isn't something that you've earned, something you've attained, something you've mustered up your best, best effort to get. But rather it's something that is poured out or given to you. Uh, so let's praise God for that. And, uh, I'll close out our session in that regard. And I'll hope that, uh, each of you are ready and excited to join with me in studying through chapter five next week, uh, as we further continue to dive into these details. Thank each of you for being a part of our study session tonight. Of course, I thank those that are viewing on YouTube and those that will view through each and every one of our sharings, whether it's on our websites, our Facebooks, or even just talking about it with our, our friends and family. Uh, thank you all again. Let's go ahead and approach the Lord and then I'll close out our session. Mighty God, I want to rebuke myself for saying approach you, Lord, because you've been here the entire time. Lord, thank you for your presence. Thank you for your truth, Lord. We thank you for the storms that might interrupt our session, but allow us to have renewed fellowship as we join back once again. Lord, you are truly sovereign and providential over all things that happen. Allow us to see that. Allow us to increase in our knowledge of you, Lord. Allow that to produce further fruits of the spirit, Lord, that the world might look to us and see you. That they would desire you all the more through the way we live our lives, through the way that we show that it's not a righteousness of our own, Lord, but it is your righteousness. Give us that peace, justice and joy, Lord, to manifest to a world that so desperately desires it. And let them see that it comes from nothing in and of ourselves, but entirely from you. Thank you for the increase. Thank you for all that you've provided, Lord. And we'll continue to trust in you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.